Hello and welcome. My name is Moritz Neun and I'm happy to welcome you here to the Traffic Forecast 2021 special session. Thanks for joining and also a great thank you to all the participants for their submissions and insightful solutions. Looking forward to learn more about them today. Let me now hand over to Michael Kopp, who will be the chair for the first session today.
Thanks very much also from my side. I'm very happy that we're hosting this special session and that we have a great program, which I'll introduce right away. So first of all, Sep Hochreiter, a true pioneer of machine learning, will introduce the competition. And then very much looking forward to Johannes Branstätter's talk on physics, molecules and PDE modeling using graph neural networks, which will have a link also to traffic. Christian Eichenberger will then introduce to our competition design and data, which is then followed by talks from winning teams of the core extended challenge. So Sungbin Choi, who was second in the co-challenge in first extended challenge will present the solution. Followed by Waswold Kanjakin, Nila Lushinka and Alexei Spielmann, who had the third place in our co-competition. And lastly, Nina Wiedmann and Martin Raubel present their solution for the third prize of the extended challenge. It's then followed by the submission of large-scale traffic prediction using 3D ResNet and Spas unit. And last but not least, we will award the special prizes. So without further ado, let's move over to true pioneering machine learning. He is the first to identify the vanishing gradient phenomenon, invented long short-term memories, made seminal contributions to metal learning reinforcement learning and has recently also introduced modern hot field networks, which are essentially differentiable network layers that can act as efficient social stiff memories. He is a professor at the Johannes Käppel University in Linz, heads the LIT AI Lab there and is also co-founder of our institute IWE. Without further ado, Sep, I yield the floor to you.
Hello, good morning everybody. Welcome from my side to the traffic forecast. This is here version, you know, it was all the successful in 2019, in 2020. And thanks also to Michael, for this kind introduction, I'm very honored. Traffic forecast 2021 version. Again, it's a preview series, it's about multimodal traffic map movie forecasting. So traffic data was rendered as a movie. It was very successful in Europe 2019, in Europe 2020. And it is also successful, it's here. Traffic, traffic is one of the big problems of humanities. And we try to attack one of humanities' largest problems by using machine learning. Traffic forecast, why such a big problem for humanity? It's about the organization. Also big cities suffer from traffic congestion. Which is, obviously, in all urban areas. But still people, citizens of the cities should be allowed to stay mobile, to travel around. And the essence is environmental concerns like air pollution, climate change. Also, it's a big issues, a big problems we have to think of if we think about traffic. And we should avoid economical losses and of course unnecessary waste of fuel. It's a big problems we want to tackle, we want to tackle it by machine learning methods. Goal is minimizing the negative environmental and social impacts of traffic. Traffic is such a central thing in our life system. We want to move from one position to another position. Like we go from home to office and everybody of us that's doing this, it could perhaps not, but later. And that is where the essential thing to move around in your city. We want to advance that, apply modern machine learning techniques to optimize traffic or to construct traffic control systems. And to understand, understand complex systems like traffic. As I already said, that data, high resolution touch, direct check, carries map to special temporal cells, patches. And so summer rest as a movie. We look at differentiated across the world also at different times. This task is more a scene completion task, or you can also cast it as a prediction task. Where you have to be very robust and it is also a full shot learning task. The data looks like this. We have volume, and when in cars or on some streets, so speed, how fast to drive and direction. And it's to the channels, and so the channels can be put together in an RGB frame, like you know, from from images. And it's here, and so right is an RPG frame. Here's an example of Berlin, Berlin city in Europe. Where you see traffic at different times. And if you look closer, you see changes, you see different behavior, different streets coming up. And different regions having more traffic than others. And what's very interesting, especially also, it's here. Traffic forecast has all this data, this measurement data, what's this also symbolic data? Symbolic data in terms of a street network, in terms of a graph null or network. Here you can apply more than techniques. I know in most cases, unit is applied, but unit would be a special face of a graph network. And here it's about integrating symbolic data into sub-symbolic methods or in sub-symbolic measurements. That's a big challenge. You have the symbolic data, some map. And you have sub-symbolic methods and sub-symbolic measurements, traffic volume, directions on. This is here, traffic forecast competition is about domain shift in future learning. That's where the central research topics, this day is in machine learning. And we looked at the traffic forecast 2021. Domain shifts in space and time. Training was provided for training data was provided for for cities. This symbolic information given by roadmap, roadmap. And that's where two major challenges. The core challenge was to predict after temporal domain shift in traffic. The domain shift was due to COVID-19. Before COVID-19 and during COVID-19, the traffic behavior and the traffic data looked differently. Questions can be generalized and set out of distribution generalization. From what we learned about traffic in a normal situation is this exceptional situation in COVID. Because guys stayed at home, couldn't go to work, there were lockdowns, it's kind of things. Did we learn enough about traffic to be also good in COVID times? And the goal was to predict dynamic traffic after five, 10, 15, 30, 45, 60 minutes. Look only a couple of minutes into the future, up to one hour in the future. So what's another challenge is what's extended challenge. It's also about future learning, about multitask learning. And here, the goal was to predict the traffic dynamics for two new cities, which were not given in the training data. This is where music is. Challenge was, can I learn traffic dynamics, can I learn how traffic processes, how traffic rules? And this force is, and can transfer, this is knowledge to, to music, this which we're not known, no data was given, what's the music? And what's the music is, all is a test input. We're given, we're even say here, what's hidden? Didn't even know what here it is. Is it during COVID or not COVID? And static maps were given, it's symbolic data was given. A big challenge where, of course, future learning challenges, you're only few data. For certain new situations, can adapt, adjust my model. To, it's a new situation, give only for data, so very hot topic now in machine learning. Can I build robust models? Because traffic is affected by weather conditions, congestion, accidents, or asset events. Like soccer game, like Bayern Munich would play Barcelona and guys go out of the stadium. It's not, this is because it's COVID, but the south coast events or concert can have effects. And some order should be robust, even if this events, okay. We have to include symbolic knowledge, give us roadmaps. This is a complex special process, a special temporary process. We try to build models for analyzing and modeling this special template process. And also parting, we want to be adaptive to domain shifts, to changes. Both in space, going to difference it is and time, going from non-COVID times to COVID times. And I want to thank all participants, forgetting involved during all this work. For creating some models and doing this predictions, we were very surprised and very fascinated how good this predictions are. And I want to thank you, I'm looking forward now to the talk of Johannes Branstätter. I'm very excited about this talk and I was, I couldn't sleep so whole night because I look forward to this talk. Thank you all of you, bye bye.
Well, thank you very much, Seb, that was, that was great. I couldn't sleep either and I have palpitations even introducing him. So actually, the talk's title is physics, molecules and PDE modeling using graph neural networks. But first, let me maybe introduce Johannes. Johannes is a senior researcher with a history of working and publishing in machine learning and high energy physics. During his PhD, he was involved at the CMS experiment at the large shine and collider at CERN, working on Higgs boson physics. Currently Johannes is a tenure track professor at the J.K. U. So Johannes Käppel University in Linz. In the group headed by Seb, and he's an Ellis fellow in the Amsterdam Machine Learning Lab in the group headed by Max Walling. His research comprises modeling of physics processes and simulations. Developing general and fully neural solvers of partial differential equations and modeling molecular properties and dynamics. I personally was mostly bowled over by his paper on steerable E3 equivalent GNNs. And maybe there's something in that talk. Johannes assured me beforehand that there is actually a very strong connection as there would be with graphs to traffic. So I will now release everyone's tension and let hand over the floor to Johannes and very much looking forward to that.
Thank you very, very much for this, this, this very kind introduction, both from, from, from Seb and from Michael. I feel very handled, but also bit pressured now. So as Michael said already, the talk or the title of my talk is physics, molecules and PDE modeling. Nevertheless, these are the techniques we use nowadays to to tackle this challenge are very transferable. Also especially as we would see in the, in the end to traffic problems. And most, mostly if you, most notably if you see traffic data as is graphs moving over time. Seb already mentioned that most of the research, most of the successful applications for this year's challenge were done by by ResNet unit and other conflict architectures. So it's very important for me to draw the connection between graph networks and convolution networks in the very beginning. And then basically to get, give you a feeling which, which challenges can be tackled by both. Where convolution networks might function better and but graph networks function better. So this talk at some point is a bit technical because I tried to split up the whole dynamic systems for, which I were talking about into a large view point into a, and into a focal blank view point. I will explain this to viewpoints in more detail in a few slides. But in order to, to be equipped with the prerequisites for these viewpoints, I need to introduce graph neural networks. Need to introduce the concept of equity variance and then of course I need to introduce nachschwärmen for the blank equations. What the large view point allows us is to model dynamic systems where particle move around. Where you can do physics simulation or you can do chemical, chemical simulation. What the focal blank viewpoint allows us is to do mesh based simulation like solving partial differential equations or solving like heat transformation of materials and that kind of stuff. So this had a two major distinctions I'm making in this talk. And I would try to connect these two, these two points and the papers I will present while going through them. So I've mentioned already that the wording dynamical system, dynamical system is a bit a new emerging trend in the whole deep learning community. It's for me personally, it has the whole, it has the potential of impact like computer vision and speech and reinforcement learning heads. Because it's describing how things move. And we all know that in deep learning, we kind of criminally neglect the time domain. So we are very good at predicting images, recognizing faces, recognizing objects, translating speech and so on and so forth. But if things move over time, if systems evolve over time, everything gets very complex, very fast. But we are now at the stage from the model wise and from the compute wise, where we can tackle like the biggest challenges. How proteins bind, how molecules move, how traffic is moving, how fluids move and so on and so forth. This goes from like really traffic data and down to to quantum simulations. And all these things together are coined in the name of the nematoc systems. And this is basically what I were talking about. Dynamical systems are very, very closely related to the concept of geometric deep learning, which is a term coined by by Michael Bronstein and his colleagues. It comes from, from research directions of graph networks, group theory, grid theory and everything which comes together with gauges and geodesics and all this theories from, from, from physics. And the idea of geometric deep learning is to really use the inductive bias, which is in your data. Bias given by symmetries, by gauges to incorporate into, into your models. You can do this as Tacko Cohen was the first in 2016 by really plugging in the symmetry groups of your data into his variant neural networks. You can do this, for example, by graphs, by modeling the, the structure of molecules by this designing the graphs and so on and so forth. The three Gs of geometric deep learning, I will talk about today is of course graphs and grids, which are very closely related. Grids are basically regular graphs and the concept of groups which can be applied to both of them. So we are already now at the stage where we can introduce graph neural networks. And graph data is really ubiquitous. You, you see it everywhere from, from molecules, from, from traffic data, but also if you look at images. Because graph is nothing else that nodes which are connected by edges. So that we see here some nodes and we can connect, connect them with edges. This specifies a graph. In the concept of graph neural networks, there is one concept which is called message passing, which is the strongest way of training graph neural networks. So we'll mainly focus on message passing algorithms. Today, message passing means that if we start on the, on the right, we have a central node here. And this node exchanges messages with the surrounding nodes. So every node sends an incoming message and this node collects all these messages to be updated. This is very similar to a convolution because if you convolve your image with a filter, you do nothing else than than collecting the information of neighboring cells. The only difference is that the convolution filter basically collects the average information of, of the cells, of the, of the grid upon which it is slighted. Whereas the graph networks really updates every, every node, by the aggregated information. And so you can basically replace every CNN with a graph neural network, but you cannot do it vice versa. Of course, replacing a CNN with a graph neural network and image data doesn't work so well because CNNs have automatically this inductive bias that points are equally distant away and so on and so forth. So they are really built to work very well and graph networks have to learn to, to, to work with these distances. But whenever data is not equidistant and when data comes with a different structure, different underlying graphs, a graph, graph networks are the tool to to choose nowadays. And I already said the name message passing networks, the, the concept of, of messages, which are modeled by a function was introduced by Gilman like four years ago. What is happening here? If we, we consider on the right side of this graph, where we have this red atom, which is a hydrogen atom and this blue atom, which is a and nitrogen, the carbon atom and this green one, which is, I don't know. But what is, what is going on is that the green atom collects the information from the yellow, the red and the blue atom. And how this information is collected first by, by looking at all this different connections. So from yellow to green, from green to blue and from green to red and putting this information into a so-called message network. So this is the message network which shares weight upon all ages in the graph. So all this, this ages go through the same message passing network. But of course, this, this message passing have different inputs, namely the red and the blue. Are the red and the green for, for this connection or the green and the blue for this connection. After we have obtained messages, we then aggregate these messages in this green node. So all the incoming messages are aggregated by summing them up or taking the maximum or another aggregation method. And finally, we apply an update network which updates the information of the screen node. This, these are the steps from, from message passing layers and everything which I described. Here makes up one message passing layer. So one message passing layer basically has two small networks inside and every network shares parameters about for all ages, for all edges in Bonkraf, the message network and for all node updates for, for all the nodes. The next theoretical, we have to tackle is group theory. Group theory is, is nowadays one of the driving forces of deep learning. Just from arising from the fact that the data we are looking at is coming with lots of symmetries inside. And the nice thing about symmetries is that, that we can describe symmetries that we can mathematically model them. And the, the, the symmetries, like the continuous symmetries are modeled by so-called Lee groups. They are Lee symmetries. What does continuous mean? If you look at the rotation, you can basically do any infinite decimal rotation. And you still have formed action of your symmetry. So you have transformed any object given to your symmetry group. You can do the same for translation. If you think of a car moving forward, any infinite symbol moving forward can be interpreted as action of your symmetry group. This, this, this Lee groups, basically, the, the representation of this Lee groups, the, the lion, on a differential manifold. That's the connection to, this is how we describe the symmetries. And examples already gave a few like translation, rotation and scaling. And how we, how these symmetries are related to our data is that every data or the data points basically can be generated by symmetry transformation, which are called group actions. What does this mean if you look at this ballet dancer? We can apply a translation symmetry to the dancer and move the dancer to the right. And that's the group action of a translation symmetry. We can of course also rotate this ballet dancer and then we would have seen here rotated version of our dancer. And very, very closely related to the concept of equity variance. At two symmetries is the concept of equity variance because equity variance is a property of a function with respect to the symmetry. It means that if we transform the input of a function, it should give you the same result. It's transforming the output of the function. And this, of course, you can think of the, the transformation of, of a translation. So if you translate the input, it should give you the same result as translating the output. You can rotate the input, it should give you the same result as rotated the output. And again, if you look at our dancer, if we move our dancer to the, to the right and then apply the function to it, which is in that case a filter map of a CNN. It should be the same as applying the function to the dancer in the first place and then putting it through our function. So in that case, we have achieved equity variance. And one of the most famous example for equity variance is CNNs because the translation exists. No matter if the, the input is in the middle or the right, also the filter maps are connected with, with such a transformation. That's the, that's the, the reason, one of the reasons why CNNs perform so well on, 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 on image data and outperform all MLP approaches. But of course, data comes with, with more symmetries and just translation. And therefore, the one of the tasks, or one of the goals in many of the architectures, I will talk now is, is how to, to use this, this transformation, this, this other symmetry groups to put into your deep learning architectures. There is just one subtlety I want to say. I get often the question if we classify an image, basically we have an invariance because no matter where the where the object is in my image, I get out cat or dog or whatsoever and cat or dog is not, you cannot apply as transformation on, on, on the output cat or dog. So what is, what is going on here is that this is a special case of equity variance. And that is when, when the guy here is the identity because then no matter how we transform the input, we get the same output. And in a convolution network, what is really happening is that all the convolution layers in the, from the beginning to the end satisfied is equity variance property, only the last output layer which maps the, the final filter map to the, to the output has the invariant property. So no matter where your input is, it will give you the, the output. That's the connection between invariance and equity variance. And with that, we come to the last point of my introduction. And this is the probably for today the most important viewpoint and that's the difference between lunchware and focal blank view. This, this is like a few point which, which kind of I have made up, but, but it helps me to, to understand and put the different models into, into perspective. And this is also how I want to introduce it today. What the large dynamics do, or large equations do, the stochastic differential equations. And they describe a particle level, a system at particle level viewpoint. So you can think of some Brownian motion, where you have a particle starting here and this particle undergoes some stochastic movement. So there is some force dragging this particle to the upper right. But it's the stochasticity which gives this particle this weird path which which it is following. And so the the Langschwier dynamics really operate on a particle point of view. So the particles are moving and the particle positions are updated for every every viewpoint. The diff or the opposite is the Fokker-Planck point of view, which is also partial differential equation. But this time it's not stochastic, but it describes the probability density function. Like the Schrödinger equation can be seen as Fokker-Planck equation. You can write that the whole procedure here with probabilities of particles starting here to particle starting here. Of course, in the in the beginning, you have something like the blue curve, so very sharp peak, which which tells you that the probability is 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 very centered around the starting position. And then when the party moves, the probability is also moved. But this mirror out because the probability is harder to tackle. Um the exact position of a particle because there is so much stochasticity in the in the in the particle. In statistical physics, you can convert Langschwier equations into Fokker-Planck equation and vice versa. And machine learning point of view, Langschwier equation means that we have particles which move around like in the wild and Fokker-Planck means that we have a mesh, which is kind of fixed. And our our values of the mesh will be updated. So that's the the probability density which changes over time. And we will start now with Langschwier dynamics viewpoint. For the Langschwier dynamics viewpoint, I like there are many, many, many examples. It can be planetary movement, it can be atom movements. It can be like molecules as I already already showed you, which are rotating and moving in time or binding to other molecules. But it can also be some some granular flow where we have lots of data points which are all particles. And we want to update the particle, the microscopic particle to get the microscopic behavior. So this is a very different, very different problems, but they are very closely connected by by the the idea that every particle is moving and we model the interaction of this particle. I think you you guessed it already. If you if you want to to plug in traffic here, what is going on? You can, for example, attach like positions to to every car, every bus or every and the other system in 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 the traffic and model its its behavior. That's the the Langschwier dynamics viewpoint of of how one could in principle model traffic. One of the the seminal papers in this this area was from Sanchez Gonzalez colleagues. What they did is they dissimulated this this dynamics of 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 water and sand by breaking it down to particle particle interactions. And there are four very important points to to say, which we will encounter in the in the following examples or in the following slides all over again. So the first is we have particle particle interaction. That's that's completely what is going on when when you talk about Langschwier viewpoint. You model the particle particle interactions. You embed this as a graph, which is kind of natural. And you use a cut-off radius, which is also kind of natural because physics tells you where to to put your your cat off radius. Particles which are close by should be connected, particles which are far apart should not be connected. And you predict the acceleration at the next time point t plus one. And you use this acceleration to update your your velocity and the position. So the the update of the and that's very important, the update of the acceleration. The the update of the position is dominant in in a kind of hybrid way. The neural network predicts to the acceleration, same implicit method gives you the 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 next position up, position points. What is also to say, if we look at at this this nice figures from the paper, we see that basically they they put their main focus on particle particle interaction. So particle particle interaction should be modeled very, very nicely. But in real world, we often have different problems. Like if we if we look at this this drum, which is well in in nowadays engineering. I think everyone has seen a rotating drum or in this 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 hopper, which is also very often used in in agriculture and farming. So in that, in in these, under these settings, this this particle particle viewpoint is 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 very nice. But the the problem is that you interact with 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 the walls and and the interaction with the walls is far non-trivial. So in 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 this paper, which was led by Andreas Meyer and in the did an enormous effort to to translate basically the the work from Sanchez Gonzalez into this new setting. We came to the to the problem that these triangleized boundaries, they are abandoned, but they're extremely hard to model. So the the first thing we did is we densely sampled all this 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 regions. But we very fast ran into a computational overload. So the idea was we needed some kind of effective theory. Effective theory is in physics a theory which breaks down a very, very complex system of equation into these kind of equations which are enough to describe the system at hand. So this is an effective theory and we wanted to do the same. We want to describe the the interaction with the boundary surface with an effective theory. So very effectively, we we needed as few particles as possible to sample this boundary conditions. Or did this this boundary surface areas. And let's start with some some initial trials where our model was already pretty good. Because we 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 used the the Sotomayor's attend and we were really, really good at modeling particle particle interactions. So the particle particle interactions made completely made sense. But what was a horror to model was the particle ball interaction. This is exactly where we needed a a new effective theory, which took care of 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 how of how this this party interact with the ball. We did this by generating a on-the-fly effective graphs, which take the the interaction with the with the ball into account on a on a particle ball interaction level. It was very important for us to not use any handcrafted conditions or restrictions because this should be generally applicable. And very nicely after like lots of lots of trials, we really were able to model and find a general way of how to describe this partings for settings where where basically you have very complex geometric boundaries. The if you if you look at this at this at this this problems, what you see here is is something rotating. And and you can guess it, there is a lot of symmetry in this data. Because particles have a rotation symmetry, there's also translation symmetry and probably other symmetries as well. So I will next talk about two ways of how one can approach such symmetries or how can incorporate such symmetries into dynamical systems. The first is a paper which was presented at this nears Newribs from from my colleagues, Miltus Kovenas and 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 Stratis Gabes. They were well looking at local coordinate frames for interacting systems. So this is an example of an interacting system they considered in the paper. You guessed that we have traffic data and they model this traffic data with graphs. So every car and every truck is represented by a node. And if we we set our coordinate system here at the crossing, the idea was for every for every node node interaction, we we move the coordinate system such that that the node attend is in the in the origin of our coordinate system. So we move the coordinate system individually for every node such that for when you calculate messages for every node, these messages are calculated from the origin. This is, of course, different for every for every of the participants. So we operate in an egocentric perspective. So the objects are moved to 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 the the respective or the 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 object are moved to to the origin. But the graph as a whole stays in the global coordinate frame. So let's let's try with this example here. So we can think of this 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 white car as as being this this yellow dot. So for calculating interactions for this yellow dot, we we move the 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 yellow dot into the origin. So we move this this white car into the origin of our system. And this means that all other cars are of course also translated and rotated with the same same group actions. In a oh, that is unfortunate. So I hope you can still see it. Basically, we see a graphic which operates in four different coordinate systems. So in in this coordinate system, the the blue part is moved to the origin. I'm sorry that the the shift doesn't play out well. In this part, the and the darker blue one is moved into the origin. In that, in in this, in this graph, the the yellow is 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 moved into origin. And this part that the red is moved into the region. So every interaction for 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 the nodes takes place in their own local frame centered at the origin. And that's a very neat approach to 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 model such such dynamical system. And it works extremely well. And they they basically tackled the whole invasion setting, which is which is quite common. That the encoder basically learns the connections and the decoder decoder learns to to predict the next state. Another approach one can do is is you you can embed everything or you can embed this the symmetries of of translation and rotation into into one network with one goal. This is a this is a paper I've done with my colleagues here in in Amsterdam. What we tried to do is is achieve E3 equivarians, which is very common in 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 nowadays graph neural networks approaches, which means equivarians with respect to to translation rotations and reflections. What our goal was, because looking at chemical and quantum chemical data, I mean also at planetary data and other like physical data, we realized that there's a lot of vector valued inputs. So for example, you can have spin, you can have force, you can have speed, you can have momentum, acceleration. And you have all this kind of data which you want to embed in your in your notes. And that the problem is if you have equivarians with respect to to like atoms or atom number, it's very easy to embed it if you rotate the graph, that the information stays the same or rotates accordingly. But what happens if you have a spin or a force vector attached to to the graph, you rotate it and and the and the spinning force vector do not rotate accordingly. And this is a main problem because you lose the the power of of generalizing to this this rotated inputs. And and therefore, we can think of it as as having a a graph here, which is has attached some 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 vector valued quantities represented as spherical harmonics, which had this this nice blobs here. And if you rotate this graph and then put it through your function, it should be the same as putting it through your function first and then rotating it. And and that was the goal and we modeled that by so-called stereo features, zero vector spaces and stereo MLPs. The whole field of sterability is is a big field in 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 the in the field of equivarians itself. I will just very loosely introduce the concept. Sterability means with respect to certain group that you can apply the group action by matrix vector multiplication. For example, very loosely speaking, if you're in the 3D case and you want to rotate, it's very easy. You use a 3D rotation matrix, a 3 times 3 rotation matrix, and you can rotate your input. However, if you are in a in a high dimensional space, it's very hard to apply a rotation matrix to to your input. So you have to operate in a space where these 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 rotations and this translation can be generated by matrix Mehta multiplication. And and this works by lifting everything to the to the basis of the spherical harmonics. And the the lifting or the 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 difference from from going from a cleaning space to to the basis of spherical harmonics as the so-called intertwiners. And then we operate in the the space of spin by spherical harmonics. And we map from one vector space to the other by the so-called Gadschorn tensor product, which is the the analogy to to standard linear layers in in neural networks. And this Gadschorn tensor product allows us to to generate networks which have this property that they are equivariant with respect to to vectors. You can you can look at this like this, if you have an input, you embed it in a in a higher dimensional space, which consists of of scalar value quantities, vector value quantities and higher order quantities. This is the lifting in the in the into the layers of spin by spherical harmonics. And then you can operate on the space via matrix vector multiplication. So this is really a a a rotation performed on this space and it works even for higher object. That's the the principal idea. The nice thing we got from from this approach is that we were able to 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 put all the geometric cues which we have in our data into our model. So therefore, the 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 stereoblike variant networks were very good whenever we have some some rotational and symmetry in our data. And it works especially good when we have vector valued and tensor valued quantities. This is an example where we have an and and molecules sitting on a on a or relaxing on a bed on another big molecule. You can think of this, or this is actually the from the from the open catalyst data set where this big atoms, this big molecule represents the and then the so-called catalyst material. And then we have a very, very small absorbent which we relax on this catalyst. And you you can already guess that no matter how you you move or how you rotate your your inputs, also the 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 absorbent and the catalyst, you will have the the same representation in our network. This is very important for for chemistry, for example, because no matter the 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 absorbent changes dramatically the the properties of the catalyst. And therefore, when you try to search for new materials, you you have to do a lot of screening, which which absorbent catalyst combinations might really reduce the the energy or the the increased conductivity and then all this 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 properties. Okay, so basically, we can now come to the to the Fokker-Planck point of view. So what what we have done so far, let me recap. So far, we really had particles which are moving. We modeled them by either by by either using or we modeled them by using graph networks, which made a updating in time. We we later baked in all the symmetries by either going to local coordinate frame or putting the the symmetries into into our network all at once. The second part of viewpoint is is the the Fokker-Planck viewpoint. So for Fokker-Planck, the particles per se do not move. So you can think of of a smoke per se in a in in this in this closed room. So you have a smoke inflow and the flow in for obeys the 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 Navier-Stokes equation and and fills out the room. You can you can think of this as having the the room, the X Y space with spend with a grid. And every X Y space has a certain value and this value changes over time. This is exactly the Fokker-Planck view, our grid, so to say, stays fixed, but only the values at the nodes change. So the graph we span stays fixed. We don't have to dynamically generate a new graph because we have the same neighbors. And only the 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 values change and with that, the updates change over time. So we we are now in the in the Fokker-Planck viewpoint. So what we are doing, basically, we there are two approaches which which I want to to talk about. We can we can see that the whole procedure is is operator mapping. So we have some initial condition, which can be like traffic data at 7:00 PM. And we want to predict traffic data in the in the evening. It can be a partial differential equation in the in the morning. We want to predict it in the evening. It can be any other physical system we we want to 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 map to. This is this is basically in the literature referred to as operating mapping. I will I will introduce one of the most popular approaches there. Or what the second choice is, we can auto-aggressively model our predictions. So we we can start in the morning, predict the next thirty minutes, use this next prediction to predict the next thirty minutes and so on and so forth. That's that's called basically auto-aggressive modeling. As as we all know, auto-aggressive modeling is harder. But it gives us the the physically interpretability of of our solutions. So such that we can better infer what is what is going on with the underlying system. It depends on the task what you want. I will start with operator mapping. I will start with operator mapping. There's this 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 really nice paper for neural operators from from people from Caltech and Nvidia. Um, and they used this for neural operator to to model partial differential equations. So their goal is really to have an initial condition and to map to solutions at given time step. So the 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 server should be designed such that if you start from an initial condition, you can map to any um solution in a given range. Of course, um, this is a very tough problem and 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 they they are able to do it for thirty forty time steps. But still, um, that's that's the way of of really approaching such such problems that you basically stay on this on this manifold on solutions and just go from the initial to the end point. They did this with so called free layers, um what we know from from um classical Merkel solutions of partial differential equations. Um, if we use, um, if we go to the furry space, so so if we map from from the position space to the furry space, all the derivations basically are just um just multiplications of the of the exponent. And and therefore, some properties are easier to to model in the furry space and then we can map back. And basically, the design the layer such that the map in the furry space and they do all these operations of the partial differential equations, meaning that the partial differential equation has to be known. It's why it's called parameter parametric, they do all this this operation there. Then they cut away some some of the higher frequencies and map back into the to the um spatial part. That's uh operating method. It also directly refers to partial differential equations because we have to know this 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 partial differential equation in order to to do this operator mapping. We next come to the recurrent approaches and the the want to talk about two papers. Um, one is 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 from DeepMind from from I clear um last year or this year. Um, it's called mesh based simulation. So remember, at the at the beginning, I showed you the 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 paper where where we modeled um physical complex systems, like the interaction of complex physical systems. Here it's very similar, but the the difference is that we are operating now on a grid. So the particles are not free floating with the Lashner viewpoint, but we are more on a grid using the the fog of blank viewpoint. And we do still the same, we predict the accelerations at the given time point, at the next time point. And we do this by, we use this acceleration again with some semi simple listed method to update the position. Um, I was not like, I was a bit like when I said that the grid is not changing because in all this this very nice simulations, um the grids are changing. The mesh, the mass meshes are changing, but the the graph itself is not changing. The conductivity stays the same and and the 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 update of the nodes is 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 very restricted such that it models that the physical system. So you can think of it, if if you put a um like this actuator on this on this on this plate, it it pushes the blade slowly over time down and all this is captured by the the updating of of this um of this positions. Okay, so that's the the first point of view. Um, and and the second is is really again directly going to differential equations. So now we again know the underlying differential equation. And it's it's paper from um Kokov Smith, Aliva, Van Benen Heuer. Um, it's also from from this here, what what they are doing, basically, they they operate in the same problem setting. So we 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 predict the the um we predict acceleration here, the predictor, the versions, to predict all this operators from a differential equation. You have to know how the differential equations look like. And then they use some American method, not an Euler scheme, but the a more advanced key to make the next time update. Um, the the difference here, the grid is really fixed, but um but the the like the the values of the grid change over time. So classical um for gap blank. What is what is what I want to note here, both of these methods for the time update, they use a um numerical method. So the 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 update of the of the time is done by some American. So we kind of still in the in the hybrid scheme where um where we we mix numerical solvers with deep neural network solvers. This brings us to to the second part of recurrent solvers. That's a work done by by me, Daniel Worland and Max Welling. Um, we we tried to design now really solve such that they are done fully by neural network. So that that everything, um, what is 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 what is basically putting you this auto aggressive modeling is is done by by neural network. We chose to use graph neural networks for the for the the reasons that they they offer this this um ability to generalize across domains, across topologies, across geometries, boundary conditions, dimensionality and all that that stuff. Um, the the way we designed our graph neural networks is by looking at all this numerical solvers. So we have tons of solvers for for doing special um updates. So we have this finer difference, finer value, volume methods and and many, many others. And we wanted to say design our message passing such that these methods are representationaly contained. What does this mean? It means that if you change your weights very accordingly, you basically end up with exactly a finer difference or a finer volume scheme. And if you change the weight, the the weights in a different way, you maybe end up with the Venus scheme. So our our processor, our message passing had all this um inferior all this this methods reputation contained. Our decoder was um designed such that we have a one D convolution which maps which which goes over the 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 outputs um which convolves over the output, which is very similar to to run a good method. So the representation containment of our of a decoder is basically reminiscent of a run a good method. So that that was basically the idea to say, okay, we really substitute the whole um American stuff with the with the with the fully neural network solver, but such that these methods in principle are contained in in our solver. What you have probably seen is the input is a vector and the output is a vector. So the the nice thing about the full operator, full network approach allows us that we can encode many, many time step at once and output also many, many times that it wants. If you think of all these examples I've shown you so far, it was always next time step prediction. But if we encode multiple time steps at once, we might have, we might, it might be easier for us to to model um to model such um such auto aggressive problems. Because as I told you, um, if if in this auto aggressive scheme, we update one time step after each other. And this is tremendously difficult because the noise is some up. If we can now input many, many time steps at once in our network and output many, many time steps at once, basically have omitted this this problem massively because the the times our solver is evoked is drastically reduced. And and yeah, so so this suggested this this um smoke flow um equations are just an example of of how also worked. For me, one of the nicest things you 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 would think at the beginning that that wave propagation with certain boundary conditions is a pretty easy problem. But like if you if you try to to put in different boundary conditions, which are not like periodic boundary condition, you need to design your Merkel solvers and therefore your data such that the grid gets irregular. So we already operate in a grid, which is very hard, for example, convolution cannot do that. And what is also very interesting is that if we we change this boundary condition, so if we have the Schley on one hand, which means that the wave um bounce bounce is back by changing its sign and for Norman on the on the other hand, which means the wave bounces back without changing its sign. It's very, very, very hard to incorporate this into our graph neural network. So basically, all our solvers always fail. And then we we like realized that we can put all this information about the equation. So telling the the solver, now you have a problem, we're on the left hand, you you have this boundary condition on the right hand, you have this boundary condition. It's just to um to integer values put into the message passing. And this really was was allowing us to um to generalize over over different boundary conditions, but also to generalize across different equations. And that basically brings me to to the final outlook. So remember when we when we were talking about Lashman problems, it was very obvious that that putting the all the symmetries into the 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 solvers into the graph networks were what was really um generalizing better and was really pushing performance to a new level. So the case is what is happening on the or the question is what is happening on the fog of blank view? Can you integrate the symmetries as well? Because there is a very nice property of of um of P D Es. There is this 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 theory of Sophus Lee. So how he even like came up with Lee Group and 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 um and all this um this 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 mathematical tools by looking at at P D Es. And then he realized that P D Es can can be associated with with um with symmetry groups. And every every P D has a certain number of symmetry groups and they they correspond to to lead groups and so on and so forth. So for example, or concluding, if we look at P D Es, we also have the symmetry groups even in a in a much nicer sense because all of the symmetry groups are predefined. So we actually know how our data is, how our nature is representing us data. So I think the next step in this in this game will be to do the same as we did for Nashwar to do for the fog of blank, namely to bake in the symmetries and all our or all all our dynamic problems to to operate better and longer and more robust on on mass meshes. And this brings me now to to the 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 way of how I look at traffic data. Because if we if we look at this challenge, we can interpret this this data as from the fog of blank point of view. So we have the data, um, we have snapshots of our X Y coordinate system. And we have the under data or the traffic getting intense and less intense over the daytime. And this is basically exactly the way that our grid is fixed and the values of our grid are changing. So we're operating in the fog of blank point of view. And then we all know that traffic can also be like this. So that um we have our our system and 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 cars move arbitrarily whilst around. And this is practically the national viewpoint. And and especially at this in this scene, we really see that they are interacting with each other. And so the way I see traffic data is is really as as a nice way where we you not only have the chance to 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 um to challenge convolutional networks and graph neural networks against each other, but also to challenge these two points of view against each other. And maybe combine them to get like a better, more robust model. Because in physics, in statistical physics, what is operate or what is working on the on the particle level is also described later onwards in the microscopic level. And that is basically the the end of my talk. And I'm pretty curious of the the solutions you have chosen to to this problems.
Well, Johannes, thank you very, very much indeed. So I can I can say my precipitations were not in vain. Thanks. It was a fantastic talk. We have actually some questions which I will quickly go to. I'll do that actually in slightly reverse order. The first question is from Anastasius Covelas. He asks, very inspiring talk. Thank you very much. I have two questions. Number one, if I use deep learning for translation and I do German to English and then the same English text back to German, I will not get the original text. So does that have the equivalence property? Any comment on this?
I um it's a it's a it's a nice way of thinking. I always think of the clip model where you have the 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 um the output of of your image and the output of your text basically. And then they they kind of go through similar networks. And and somewhere in the networks, the representation should be should be the same. Somewhere the network should know that the the text of the of the image represents the same as as the as the image. And and you can think of the 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 same way if you translate then a language to the other language. Somewhere in your system, um, the language should be such in such an abstract way that the way of of representation is the same, no matter if it coming from German to English or from English to to German. And and that's, I think, the way of of how to to build better language models. And I I I think people are doing this to 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 force it basically to have this this representation, which no matter from which side you're coming, it should give you the same.
I I I like your answer. It should be the same meaning, right? So yeah, and I guess the group is the cyclic group on two general with one generator, right? So go one way, other way, that's a group action. I'm guessing the group action is translation. Um, yeah, very nice, very nice answer. Um, second question, yes, is if we compare movement of particles with movements of vehicles, what do you think are the main differences? Um, what about boundary conditions? What is the importance in defining the movements? I think I answered it.
I think personally that um the the movement of the streets is um in a sense harder to model because you have so much predefined like cars cannot go widely around, you have to follow the roads. So kind of you you have to incorporate this into your network that um that basically the the way you you update positions, the way you update um everything follows some rules or some more like um um, yes, some laws, but on the other hand, it gives you the chance to incorporate more um into your your networks. But compared to to the the simulations, we saw here definitely restrictions in the movement.
Very nice. Um, this is a question from Christian Eichenberger. Uh, he says, great talk. Many thanks for the explanation with some physics and chemistry viewpoint. You related your approach to traffic during the talk. Um, question number one, how would you have tackled this year's traffic forecast competition? Probably there's quite a few people who'd like to know that. And then a second question he has, um, how would you evolve the competition in order to apply your approaches? That's maybe also looking to what we should be doing in the future.
Yeah, so the 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 question is, I I I think, um, if you look at this, these two, these two images, it's it's very um obvious what what one has to do is is looking at. And that's what all of you are doing, um, is looking at the the data um from from a fog of blank point of view. So so the positions are fixed and the intensity of 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 um vehicles change over time. Um, it's it's basically the the area where where convolution networks operate like extremely well. What I would be interested is splitting this this um this this input into like certain cells, like into sixty or thirty two cells. Um, and and they like they are treated as as nodes of a graph and interact with each other. Um, and this like additionally to the to the standard way of 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 processing the the graph with the convolution data. Because with with that, you might get the better or you might get the chance to to model um to to let the the lower right or the 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 lower left bar um like get to know what is going on in the upper right. But I'm not sure if 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 I would would have any chance in this challenge. Um, it's it's just what was personally interesting.
Very nice. Johannes, thank you very, very much again for for this fantastic talk. Um, and yeah, I really, really, really enjoyed it.
Thank you for having me.
Please, it's a pleasure. Uh, now we move on. Our very own Christian Eichenberger will tell us about the traffic forecast competition design and the data.
Thanks, Michael. I'm happy to give you some more details on data and design in addition to what's introduced introduced already so nicely. In this part, we will come less from the M L side and more from the data collection traffic domain side before yielding the floor to our participants and seeing their solutions, which I to give you know use design and data to those new to the complete competition. But we also hope we can also shed light on some new aspects for those knowing the competition for longer. And we will come back to many of the aspects covered here and the examples we we took in in this block in the discussions later and try to discuss the insights and the shortcomings of the current setup. So for encoding dynamic traffic data, we're using the traffic map movie format. Um, as we have already seen, this encoding aggregates raw GPS probe into a grid of approximately one hundred by one hundred meters with five minute frames. Volumes and speeds for all four major headings are encoded in eight channels. And each movie snapshot covers approximately fifty kilometers by fifty kilometers of urban area. So it's it's it gives quite a nice comprehensive coverage of the whole of a complexity. Now to data collection, the data originate from a large fleet of vehicles. And the data is provided by by here technologies. These vehicles recorded their movements in multiple metropolitan areas. And the data covers so a quite a diverse set of cities, both cultural and socially. So maybe some some further details on 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 the data data collection and the four headings headings that And the four headings headings, that's the four quadrants you see at the bottom of of the plot. So we have northeast, southeast, southwest and and northwest. And the volume is captured captures the number of pro points recorded by the by the vehicles. The values are kept both both above and below and then mapped to the to an integer range. And the same applies for mean speed, which measures actually the average speed from the collected pro points. Maybe an important point here is if there were no cheapest probes, speed in the data is actually represented by by zero. And that's that's the point we're coming back to later in discussion. So maybe some additional aspects which are important in the data collection process. The GPS recordings, because they come from from vehicle fleets, they only represent sub sample of the top traffic going on in the city. And they can have different frequencies and other temporal patterns depending on the city area and on the fleets which contributed to 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 the data. In addition, there's and these explanations say they also say why there is also a city bias. So between cities, there is different coverage by fleets of of the road networks. And what's nice about the the traffic map movie format, and that's something we we exploited quite strongly in preparing this this summit, is we can visually explore the data by applying visual filters or static statistical aggregations. So I I talked about about noise coming from from sub sampling. So fleets representing just a sub sample of the of the whole traffic going on. There is obviously also noise in in the tessellation we do so in creating and in applying applying the four quadrants on on data and doing this kind of aggregations. So if there are some probes close to the cell or the heading boundaries, this can introduce fluctuations in data. And we've seen such phenomena in the data as well. In the four plots on the left, we show mean speeds for Berlin and we see the expected symmetry along the diagonal. So we have northwest and southeast where same area are are called college quite alike. On the right hand side, you see a small example when zooming in on the road network. And there you see the traffic, the the streets with their directions. And obviously, cheaper probes going along this graph has to be mapped onto the onto the four quadrants and into the grid. So this introduces interesting properties. Some more on on the the road craft. We we added this year to make the this also the spatial transfer possible. So on the left hand side, you see a grayscale picture of the city road road graph. And in the center, you see a sort of a connectivity between those cells. So for all the cells you see on on the left hand side, in the right hand side, a niche says the two the two cells are connected. And this center and this this representation in the center has been derived from the higher res grayscale city map we see on the right hand side. So we took that image and derived a graph representation from that. And we hope we can in the later discussions, we can see whether that adds to being able to do the transfer. Now coming to the two challenges we set up, Sepp has already introduced that. So some some further examples of of the domain shift which we are interested in. So the first one is the COVID nineteen pandemic coming in. We see here two two cities, Istanbul and New York. We have the blue lines representing volumes before COVID and the orange line representing volume over the day, over one day, over one day of our data during during COVID. So we see the the curves are quite similar, but at lower volumes. What we also see for for Istanbul, the morning peak, we see we see more to the left. It's more it's it's less prominent and in New York, it seems to have gone completely. Now let's have a look, a more detailed look into into that and not not only looking at at volumes over the daytime, but also looking at speed. So that's the 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 red curves here. So we have on the left hand side, we have three before COVID situations. And so three locations before COVID and on the right, the same locations, one day of of data for the same locations in COVID. So in twenty twenty. So the first example on the top is a highway in the outskirts of Berlin. So you see the the general speed volume is quite high. During nighttime, there is there are some some there is missing data or there is no data. So there's there are quite a few spikes. And if you see, if you look at, if you compare the two before and in COVID, you see again the morning peak has almost completely vanished. And the afternoon peak seems at least as prominent as as before. So if you go to the second example, that's also a highway, but more in the city center. So there are speed limitations there, speed signaling, which reduces the the max level or the free flow speed when there is small volume in in this example. What you also see is during daytime, and this happens in COVID and before COVID, there are some situations where speed goes down and and volume goes up. And these are short and traffic jams, which which partially slow down the the traffic that is going on. And what you also see is that there's much more coverage. So also during nighttime, we have we have we have more data points. So there is despite the behavior is less spiky during the nighttime. And the third example is is a boulevard in the center of Berlin with business as well as housing. And here the two patterns look quite alike. So let's maybe go to the to the summary. We've already introduced the two, the second challenge as well. So the second one is if you add if you add the static data, then the map data, make does this make possible a chance for learning across cities where where we didn't train on those cities? So this picture lovely highlights the the main points of the summarizes the two competitions. We have training data for four cities for both before and in COVID with full coverage. We have the core challenge where we have only training data for before COVID and only train on the only test slots for during twenty twenty. And we have the extended challenge where we don't provide any training data for the city. So this should have given you an introduction to the our two competitions and hopefully there are some new insights to us.
Thank you very much, Christian. Fantastic analysis. Let's come to the to the meaty part of today's proceedings. Let's have a look at the solution. So the first speaker up is Sung Bin Choi. He actually got the second prize in our co-competition and the first prize now extended competition. And the title of his talk will be applying unit for the traffic map prediction across different time and space. Sung Bin Choi. Flow is yours.
Oh, so I'm now I'm going to present my experiments, applying unit for this trapping back prediction task. So the input regarding input, there was a dynamic data which changes over time and static data which does not change over time. And there was also this year, there was a high resolution, aesthetic data was given, but I didn't use it. So regarding dynamic data, there was a twelve previous timeframe trapping map was given. And each pixel has traffic volume and speed to picture channel with for each direction. So there are eight picture channel. And I I haven't used any recurrent model for this task. So simply the time axis was burst into the picture channel. So in regarding dynamic data, there was ninety six picture channels. And in static data, there was nine picture channel combining those datas. We have input of one hundred five feature channel. And so we need to predict then six future timeframe. And each pixel has eight feature channels. So we'll make forty eight output channel predictions. So basically, I used unit and the model was trained using the mean square, the error loss function, which is same as the evaluation measure for the test set. The model was trained using item optimizer. And I I apply, I tried four different model structures for the unit. It is named as model A, B, C, and D. So in the unit, there is a down sampling pass, down sampling blocks and up sampling pass. And there's interconnection between them. Inside the down block, there are three convolutional layers and they are densely connected with each other, inspired from the dense net. And after each down sampling block, it is a down sampled by average pulling layer. So it image size is held in size. And in model B, it has similar architecture with the model A, but simply the difference was the when we doing the dice down sampling, the it is done by linear interpolation and the scale factor was set to zero point seven. So in previous model A, practically it was scale factor was zero point five. So in this case, if input was one hundred, then output will be seventy in size. After that, forty nine. So image is shrink more slowly compared to the model A. And in model C, just one max pulling layer was added between the two convolutional layers and other all other things are same as the model A. And in model D, various convolutioner and max pulling layers were applied. Then it was the output was added to the previous input. So I tried to implement some kind of less net like structures for the model B. So this year's task has a whole and extended task. In the call task, there was four different type, four target cities. And there were eight different cities for the train set in total. And I trained seven based on models for the core task. So I named it as T one from T one M one to T one M seven. For the T one, so model A, B, C, D was used at least once for the this call task. And T one M one, the model was trained only from the target city. So if it was test set is Berlin, that it the model is trained only from the Berlin. T one M two is same as T one M one, actually acquired from the same training. But if the model only has a different iteration number. In T one M three, in this case, I trained initially model from arbitrary city Moscow. Then then trained moved the model to the train on the target train set. What I was trying to do was like in other image classification task, people use like it pre-trained the image in a pre-trained model to other fine tune them to other tasks. So I tried to do the same thing, kind of transfer learning. But the output test test set evaluation score did not look like performance was improved at all, but I included it anyway. From T one M four to T one M seven, the all the A CDs were combined and used as your train set. Actually, I this is my third participation of the challenge. But the last for the last two years, I also tried these methods combining. Until the last year, there were three CDs. So I combined three CDs train set and tried to train the model. But at that time, it was clear that the performance from the trained from the three CD were inferior, lower than the model trained from only the target train set. So I didn't I didn't try it for the final model. But this year, the evaluation score looks comparable to the models trained from the target city only data set. So I tried these, included these models for the for my final submission. So these seven mothers output was simply combined by averaging. And my best score for the call test was forty eight point four nine, according to the mean squared error measure. For the extended task, in this case, the target city was New York and Vienna. And no training data for the target city was given. So the all A CDs train set was combined and used as the train set. For the extended task, I trained four different base models. T model A, model structure A and C was used. T two M two into two M two. I tried, I trained, I tried to do some data augmentation technique, which is horizontal and vertical image clipping. This is pretty common method, common data augmentation method, commonly used in other image classification task. But I tried it in the previous years, come previous years, this competition, but it didn't look like it's helping performers for this task. But for the extended task, I used it, I tried it anyway. And regarding T two M four, in this case, the model, I applied some loss rate for each CD. If you see the right lower side of the slide, this is the loss rate. I tried point to CD and this these values were arbitrarily set. No, no justification is there. I just said it based on like if you see this loss rate, Barcelona's loss rate is set to one point zero and Moscow's loss rate is set to zero point two five. The reason was that generally the loss value from the train set from Moscow was four times bigger than the Barcelona. So if we train model, simply combining those all A CDs, then I was worried that maybe the model could be biased to the the data from Moscow has more effect to the final output. And effect from Barcelona is too low. So I wanted to somehow balance out those effects from per each CD. But the evaluation score from the test set does not look like there's a so meaningful difference. But I included it as a final. But I included it as a final model anyway. So I finally used the four different models. And it was again combined by averaging. And my best score from the public test set was fifty nine point five.
Wow, that's actually very nice, amazing solution. Thank you very much indeed. So I have to confess, I have lots of questions, but maybe we keep that for the for the end of the day when we have a broader discussion. Let's move to the next talk from the third prize winners of our co-competition with the title solving traffic forecast competition with UNET and temporal domain adaptation. The talk will be given by three people now. I hope I will not butcher your names and if I do please apologies. It's I think it's Seva Konjakin, Nida Lucchin, Lukashina and Alexei Spielmann from Itmo University Jet Brains Research and HSE University respectively. I yield the floor to you.
Yeah, thanks so much. Great introduction. As as already mentioned, we were only focusing on the core core challenge. And here in the stock, I'll present our third base solution to the challenge. So our main contributions were as follows. We first build and train the four independent unit models that serve as a baseline for the for the challenge, which later turned out to be very hard to beat. Then we employ different encoders to the above mentioned unit. The encoders are be trained on ImageNet. And then we also explore a set of domain adaptation techniques in a sense that we want to find the the temporal shift that was present in the in the test subset. And then we also research, well, we also tried different assembling methods to combine different networks and domain adaptation techniques and to create the best scoring submission. So speaking of the baseline unit, we first split the two thousand nineteen data into four faults, leaving one fold out for validation on two thousand nineteen data. We then train four independent unit models for each of the core city. And we also for this one, we experiment with the post processing mask because we well, as a prior knowledge, we know that we cannot drive off road. And then we try to post process our productions to make data more sparse in a sense, the predictions more sparse. So we experiment with the static mask from the from the road graph. We also experiment with the mask update from the two thousand nineteen training data. And the idea is very simple. If pixel has ever been non-zero, we set the mask value to one, otherwise to zero. And also, we experiment with the mask update from the two thousand nineteen training data and two thousand twenty test data together. So as as you can see, over the test leaderboard, the the best post processing function was to combine the two thousand nineteen training data and two thousand twenty test data. So we later on fix this post processing function for all our later submissions. And one one other important thesis here is that UNET is a very simple yet strong baseline that turned out to be very hard to beat. So furthermore, we tried experimenting with employing the pre-trained quarters on the image net. I think that was also part of 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 the other competitor solutions. So we employed, we tried with efficient at B five and dense net two hundred and one. The the idea to use this one for is rather empirical. It was the idea was to match the number of parameters for the with the original unit model. So again, we we would try this to encoders, we trained for cities, for models independently for four cities. And we it it turned out that the performance on the validation of on the validation data on two thousand eighteen data was better for the for the for the new models. However, on the two thousand twenty domain, the models were the performance of the models were a bit worse, meaning that the this models were lesser bus to the through the shift in two thousand twenty. So we decided to kind of experiment with domain adaptation techniques to maybe better use the the let's say more sophisticated models with the pre-trained encoders. So the domain adaptation techniques that we tried were pseudo labeling. The idea of the pseudo labeling is very simple. You just so you label the test data with the with the predictions of the model. And then kind of fine tune the model and its own predictions. However, the performance seems to have been decreasing. And we explain that basically that with the two thousand twenty test data, the temporal domain shift is also present in the output maps themselves. So that's why we tried something which is rather heuristic, but we found it very effective in a sense. So we called it temporal domain adaptation. And the idea is to kind of bridge the two thousand twenty test data to the two thousand nineteen training domain. And we did it simply just by calculating the mean traffic map per year, which is essentially a three-decentor encoding the traffic in in each of the pixel and also in the channel of the traffic map. So we calculate this min traffic map for two thousand nineteen training and two thousand twenty test data for each of the city. And then we use this as a relation to calculate the transformation from two thousand nineteen to two thousand twenty test data. And and use this relation as a pre-processing function, as post-processing function for our inference. Simply said, so how how does it look in practice? Is that once first we have twelve input frames, just representing, I guess, the volume by four volumes combined. So we first imply the temporal dominated patient somehow bridging the so if if this is the twenty twenty test test data, we want to breach it to the twenty two thousand nineteen data. Since our models were trained on two thousand nineteen, we apply this temporal domain adaptation, then we do the model inference. And then and then at the end, we apply the inference relation inference to make temporal domain adaptation to bring to bridge the the predictions back from two thousand nineteen kind of to two thousand twenty. So and at the end, since we had different models and different domain addition techniques, it was worth trying to just assembling all of that together and hoping that it will get better performance on the test set. So essentially what we did is that we had the assemble of three models. And the ensemble of the three models with the temporal domain adaptation technique that I just discussed. And then having this two ensembles, you can also assemble the two together and get our final predictions. So speaking of the results, here is the the first first line is representing the the three model ensembles with the temporal domain innovation. And the second one represents just the model assembled together. And then just by combining the two, we get best result so far. So maybe well, the the best result that we achieved. So maybe the idea is that temporal domain integration was a bit harsh. And then the truth with the bridging the data is somewhere in between. Yeah, so I think that's it for our solution. Thanks. Thanks so much for for your attention and for the competition organizers as well.
Very, very nice solution. Well, thank you for participating and very creative way of solving it. There's another question. There was also a question from so to some bin. Maybe very quickly, great insights ever and congratulations for your third prize. Interesting domain adaptation approaches. Do I understand it correctly? That the temporal domain adaptation kind of represent represents a weighted mask for the translation from two thousand nineteen to two thousand twenty?
Yeah, I think it's 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 another way to put it. So basically, if you think of it, there is a pixel in two thousand nineteen representing the traffic. We kind of maybe want to, there is an idea that in two thousand twenty, the average traffic was was less than in two thousand twenty, two thousand nineteen. So we just want to find a coefficient that maps this pixel in two thousand nineteen, two thousand twenty and backwards. Well, once you know the coefficient, you can map it backwards from two thousand twenty to from two thousand nineteen to two thousand twenty. So I think the answer is yes.
Very nice. But there are more questions. I hope in the interest of time, everyone, maybe we can get a bit of space later to to discuss them. I think they're all great. I have a hundred. But let's maybe I hope you you're still around, then we can we can maybe do that. Let's go to the third prize of the extended challenge. The title of the talk is Traffic Forecasting on Traffic Movie Snippets. That's from Nina Wiedemann, the team was Nina Wiedemann and Martin Raubel and they are from MIT Lab and ETH Zurich. Nina, I yield the floor to you.
Yeah, thanks for the introduction. Yeah, I'm from the Mobility Information Engineering Lab at ETH. And I would like to present our approach for the traffic forecast challenge, which was based on processing movie snippets of these traffic movies. So the idea is to not process these traffic movies as a whole, but rather to split them into patches and then to process the patches and merge the predictions in the end. Why do we want to do this? Well, we were particularly interested in solving the extended challenge. So to generalize to new cities. And our idea there was that it is not necessary to input a whole street network of like to to train on a whole street network of another city. When a test time, the street network will be of course completely different. Therefore, also as a second reason to predict one pixel in the city, it would probably not be necessary to input also pixel that is at the opposite side of the city. And so therefore, we might we thought it might be better to train on regions of the city. And apart from this, however, this patch-based approach has several other advantages. First of all, as you all experienced probably when working with this data, it's of course very high dimensional, the the original input. And this, of course, needs to long training times if you don't have a lot of GUs. And also, if you don't have a lot of memory, then you need to use a very low batch size and and so on. So it can, of course, improve performance just that you reduce the dimensionality of the data and kind of have a divide and conquer approach. And last, another nice advantage of the method is that we if we at test time make the patches be overlapping, we get several predictions for one pixel. So this leads to kind of an assemble in itself because we can average these predictions. Of course, this idea is not new in computer vision. I've found several papers in different applications, including, for example, natural image segmentation, tumor segmentation, brain images and even tree bark classification. And what this works usually do is then when the classification example, you summarize the predictions afterwards in the majority voting or in regression tasks, you just can summarize by averaging the predictions. So now I want to go a bit more into detail in our approach. So it's training time, we just randomly sample patches from the original data. So what we actually do is we cache always several days of training data and then randomly sample certain time slots and locations in the pattern in the images. And these patches are then fed through unit plus plus. There are three reasons why we use a unit plus plus. First of all, as we've already heard, the unit was a very strong, is a very strong baseline that was used in in the last years. And secondly, the unit plus plus is a success and was shown superior in in different applications. Also, we thought that since the traffic data is highly regular over time, it might be useful to have these additional skip connections. So the main difference of unit plus plus compared to unit is that there are more skip pathways. As you can see in this image on the right and on these pathways, there are further convolutional layers, which are the green points here. Yes, so this is what we do for training. And then a test time, we take the city, the the new cities and we split them in like a grid wise manner now. So this leads to another parameter, which is kind of the stride with which we kind of convolve the images. So you can imagine that we can move this window in a different step size. And if the step size of stride is lower, we get even more patches per pixel. And therefore, more predictions which we can average in the end. I directly want to jump now to our results on the leaderboard. So this is copied from the performance on the test data. And the first thing we observed is that the unit plus plus converts faster. So here on the bottom right, you can see a test that we did on the validation data set. So this validation data set is just the city that was left out during training. So we try to simulate the test situation. And also here in our scores, you can see that the same amount of epoch at least, the mean square of the unit plus plus was significantly lower. The second thing is then that we tried our approach with patch size of hundred times hundred pixels. And then in test time, we use the stride of fifty pixels. So as you can imagine from the slide before, is that this is half of the patch size. So therefore, for each pixel, we get at least four predictions, except for pixels at the border, of course. And this improves the results for both the unit and the unit plus plus. Then, of course, we asked, what is the best patch size? So we tested different sizes of of these patches. But we observed that if we make the patch size even lower, for example, sixty times sixty pixels, we got always worse results. So this hints at the fact that maybe a certain size is necessary in order to predict the traffic one hour into the future. And last, our final best submission on the leaderboard was the same model as this one like the hundred times hundred patch size with a fifty stride. But now we use the stride of ten, such that we get even more predictions per pixel. And this last fact, we wanted to explore more into detail. And what we did here is also on the validation set again, we varied this stride. So we use the same model as our best performing model, but just the test time user difference stride varying from hundred to ten pixels. And you can see that there is a clear decrease of the mean square error. But on the other hand, as you can see on the Y axis, the change is rather marginal. So we can see a high improvement with this averaging. And we conclude from this that the advantage of our method is not really like, there's not more in the in the ensemble type behavior, but it's rather just the patchwise processing and yeah, the division of the problem into sub problems. And last, another idea that we had was that maybe averaging the predictions in the end is maybe not the best method for aggregating the predictions. And one hypothesis that we had is actually that if a pixel is more central in one patch, then the predictions of this particular patch can be better than if the pixel is in the very corner of of this patch. So the idea is that if like in one patch a pixel is in center, we can use all information that are around this pixel. And we can get a better prediction. And to see if this hypothesis is true, we compared three different methods to aggregate predictions. One is just our baseline of just taking the average. The second is just to take the one patch where the pixel is most central. And the third one is to do a weighted average and to make the weights proportional to the centrality of the pixel. So again, just in other words, we do the same as before, we we just take a certain stride and get several predictions per pixel, but then we make a selection of each for each pixel which predictions we actually take. But the average performed best of all of these three, the weighted average is similar. But at least it doesn't give any increase in performance. And yeah, we conclude from this that this hypothesis is not true. Apparently, centrality doesn't play a role at least for our model. However, there might be other smart ways to to do this summarization or aggregation of the predictions. For example, these weights could also be learned, that's on the asset could be tried. So what we conclude from this is that patchwise processing has several advantages. At first, first, we could see from our performance of our model, that it seems to better generalize to new cities. And secondly, it has it needs to faster training time. And we get this is something like output averages, which also has some nice properties. For example, that we can compute the standard deviation. So as a side factor, also thought about for this special price, where you can, where we should try to predict where the focus was on certain unseen situations or abnormal situations. There thought maybe this standard deviation of the predictions is higher in the situations. So this would be something that's also maybe interesting to explore. And then also we conclude from this work that it might not be necessary to compress our cities into a predefined raster. So the way the data is given is that, of course, kind of Vienna is kind of made similar to New York and compressed into a raster of the same size. And if a patch-based processing is better anyway, then it might not be necessary or even a disadvantage to do this. Also, we think that our approach together with other approaches might achieve the best performance. So it would be really interesting to try this approach with the models proposed, for example, in the talk before by Sun Bin Chai. Or also with a graph neural network. So this approach is general and is not dependent on the network architecture, of course. Also, we did some further error analysis and we think it might be interesting in further work to focus on the, on the loss function, such as to use some masking techniques. And also maybe to develop methods that are particularly useful for dealing with this sparse data. So this is the problems that we observed with our model. This could be quite hard for the model. I want to thank my collaborators and colleagues at the MLab. And there are some resources on the left side, to our links to our website and the code. And I'm looking forward to your questions and to hear the solutions of the other participants.
Well, thank you very much, Nina. Thought-provoking work and would be fantastic if we could explore that. Let me go through some questions for all you three. So for Sun Bin, for Seva and for Yuna. I'll try and do it fairly in order bit. So there's actually a lot of questions coming in. I'll start with you, Sun Bin, if you can hear me. Question is from Christian Eichenberger. Congratulations for your performance in the competition and many thanks for presenting. Did I understand you correctly that the ensemble in the co-competition differ for each city? So that's your T1M1, T1M2, T1M3, whereas what you used in the extended competition is fully city independent.
Hello. Okay. So the my, in my method, in the call, call task, T1M1 to T1M3. Or your question is right, I used the, I trained about a point to city, so there are poor model in the core task in T1M1, T1M2, T1M3. And in the extended task, the model was a totally city independent.
Okay. Very nice. And then does that then mean this again from Christian in the co-competition ensemble, did you use per city model only in T1M1? Does this mean you trained four versions of T1M1?
Yes, that's correct.
Very nice. Thanks very much, Sun Bin. Then I go to next question for you, Seva, from Christian Eichenberger. Congratulations for your prize and thanks for the nice presentation. You applied a TDA technique. Did you, did you inspect in detail where it helped to improve the solution quality?
No, I think it's something that I'm lacking for sure. Maybe it would be interesting to see actually, maybe that which regions that this helps and which regions, it doesn't help. But maybe I can boost it, maybe selecting the pixels where we need to buy this one or not.
But it's very interesting, right? Because you could then all of a sudden predict which pixels it helps or not. So in general, you could think that if you just learn to train the model on non-domain shifted data, your domain shift adaptation comes in the TDA, if you like. Yeah. Maybe, maybe Sun Bin. I can take one of your models off the shelf. Fantastic. Nina, I have a question from you from, from Moritz Nein. Great insights, Nina, and congratulations to your third prize. The patch-based approach is really inspiring on your centrality analysis. Would this mean that the model and the patches did not really learn rules that would be more prominent in the central cell? E.G. like the flow is leading to and through a patch?
Yes, so it seems like it, I would say that it's, I mean, I wouldn't say that it did not learn any, any rules. I would say maybe the rules are just not dependent on the centrality, right? So it might, it might just be that, for example, if a pixel is in a corner, but this corner is anyways the direction where there's not much traffic and all this traffic comes from the upper right, then maybe it might be better just to use this patch because there's more information on the upper right than, like, I mean, this assumption that there is most information if the pixel is most central is probably in a city not always true or hardly ever true. So I think this is what I would take from this at the moment. But I mean, I still think that it might learn different things. I mean, there is some variations between the predictions. And I think, for example, if one could learn these weights, for example, it could depend on the street network that in some regions it might be better if the pixels are certain, like one patch might be more important than the other patches and this could be learned. But for this, of course, we would have to have training data from the same city.
Do you think that like when you say the, the patch size you actually considered? I mean, you could translate it if it's roughly a hundred by a hundred meters, then that's, we see that it don't get the power of ten wrong. We are then looking at ten thousand meters, basically, so ten kilometers. So I guess that, that means, do you think that means that if you go to a smaller patch for one hour prediction, there may be effects in the traffic further away from that that play into that and hence the performance decreases? And do you see difference, differences between cities where maybe the speed is lower or so on?
Yeah, it's a good question. I, I mean, I just saw this decrease in performance. So I think it could be due to missing information, information, basically, that like other parts that are further away are better to predict results. I mean, for one hour, you can also imagine that ten kilometers do play, play a role, right? I mean, there is more travel that goes more than ten kilometers far. And maybe again, if we take the example of people going home from work, it might be that, yeah, that some activity starts further away. And then if the model sees this activity that starts at five P M. Really far away, it can already conclude about some activity in this region one hour in the future. But of course, this already assumes a really good performance of the model. Some of the model, model can, I can actually do this. And regarding differences between cities, I'm not sure, but I also haven't, haven't tested this qualitatively or observed any differences.
Maybe one last question for me, so to, to blog is very interesting. How do you treat the edges? Because obviously there you don't slide your thing over as, as much and you don't get as many averages. Did you consider maybe like starting outside the domain and it needs to learn it or?
Yeah, I mean, I saw zero padded inputs as it was done in the, in the code that was already published. But apart from that, I didn't take special care on these. Also because I observed that in the borders, actually, the predictions are zero a lot of the times anyways. And almost all of the cities, the borders are, they're very sparse. So I think they don't, I mean, I just observed that they don't contribute much to the mean square error. So I didn't take special care of them.
Very nice. Thank you. Any further questions, anyone? Because if not, then keep them and we can hopefully do them a bit later. And let's go for the next great talk. We had a submission we liked very, very much about with the title of large-scale traffic prediction using 3D ResNet in sparse unit. That's from Bo Wang, Raza, and apologies if I mispronounce your name here. Mohairi Por, Chen Chai, Inni Kim, and Hai Wu from Monash University, CSR OS Data Sixty-One, Kong Ju National University.
Hi everyone, my name is Bo Wang, PhD student at Monash University. It's my pleasure to present our work proposed for Traffic Forecast 2021. Our topic is about larger scale traffic prediction using 3D ResNet and the sparse unit. This work has been finished with my supervisors, Riza and Chen at CSR OS Data System, Professor Inki Kim and Professor Hai Wu at Monash University. So today I will present the work with three sections, background, methodology, and conclusion. So all tasks in this year belong to the time series forecasting problem. Our, the participants are supposed to use twelve time steps to predict the following six in the next hour. So for each particular time step, we have corresponding image-like tensor that represents the traffic information. W and H are the width and height of the city map. And I represent the traffic speed and flow in four directions. So there are two different challenges set for spatial and temporal domain shifting. Since the corresponding training data for these scenarios are not accessible, so our strategy is to train a model that can be generalized for this testing situations. So data augmentation should be the most common method to increase the ability of generalization. But the tricks we tried, such as image cropping and the image rotation, were not working very well. I think this is because this is time series data. If we trace them like cropping, then their inner relationship will be changed. So the question becomes how to better utilize existing training dataset? Because all available datasets are very large. It's very time-consuming to train them completely. Therefore, we have proposed a custom plan to prepare the training data. In each training epoch, we actually pick up limited files to examine the learning process of our model. Among these files, all cities will be selected for the spatial diversity. And all different days of the week are selected for the temporal diversity. In other words, we hope to increase the model generalization by creating the most representative samples in every training epoch. Furthermore, to improve the speed of data loading, we have created a custom sampler for the data loader. To make it, make, make this clear, we have prepared an example. Assume that we have three training files. Each of them contains five samples. So in PyTorch, we can write something like this. Batch size equal to three and shuffle equal to true. Then the data loader will shuffle all available samples and return three indices every time. However, if the indices just like, like this in this simple batch, one, seven, and thirteen, if the indices point to different files, then we need to load multiple files even for this one batch. This is very time-consuming. On the other hand, our method first shuffles the order of the files just like this one, file one, two, three, becomes file three, one, two. Then we shuffle the original indices in each file as well. Just like this way, the, the, the original sequential indices will be randomly shuffled. So the final batches will be loaded sequentially based on this new order, just like this way. The third batch. So by catching these files when loading these, these files in the memory, we can improve the data loading speed from two batches to sixty batches, which is thirty times faster. In terms of forecasting models, we have explored two approaches for this competition. The first one is based on 3D convolution. Compared to the 2D convolution widely used in previous years and this year, the, the 3D kernels can actually more across three different dimensions, just like this way. We believe this operation can learn more complex spatial-temporal features in the hidden layers. Therefore, we propose a resonant structure using 3D convolution. It uses padding to remain the original map size through all hidden layers. Also, we used consecutive residual blocks to increase the depth of the neural network. As a result, this model has achieved a fifth place for the core challenge. The second model is called sparse unit. It was inspired by the sparsity of the given data. For example, we have randomly picked three time steps from Melbourne City here. It was a busy morning. The study area is four nine five by four three six. However, we can see that these colorful points only about one thousand and four hundred cells are not zero, which means only zero point six four percent grace of all available positions. And if we perform a convolution through these sparse inputs, just like this way, then the majority of our results would be zero only. Therefore, we, we have introduced a sparse convolution for this task. Compared to the regular convolution, it converts the non-zero data points into a big list, then performs the convolution on these related areas only. So based on this feature, we propose a unit structure using sparse convolution because units is a strong baseline. But for this one, it's, it's quite simple, just six hidden layers, contains ups, downsampling and the upsampling layers. As a result, the sparse unit can speed up the modeling speed four six times compared to the same structure that using, that using 3D convolution layers. Although this method requires much less computation resources, it still achieve competitive result on extended challenge. But in practice, we found that this, the convert speed of this method was very fast. However, it tends to overfeed the training data for the core challenge. We don't know the exact reason behind, behind this, but we hope to solve this problem in future studies. Moreover, we have explored the performance bottleneck of our models. We found that our models suffering from the spatial inaccurate problem. Our two models tend to predict the average values of six target time steps rather than the actual sequential changes of the traffic flow. Apparently, given the M S, M S E loss, forecasting the average value is much easier than this local sequential change. And we believe this problem can be solved by proposing more advanced optimization methods. Finally, please allow me to conclude this presentation. We have proposed 3D ResNet and the sparse unit for this competition. And they have achieved competitive result in both accuracy and competition efficiency. There are also, there are several potential research directions can be explored in the future. Firstly, the study of sparse collusion for the regression problem is still in an early stage. Their inner mechanism, structural design, and model generalization still need for further investigation. Secondly, through our experiments, we found that with different traffic samples, the different approach of convolution can be, can lead to very different results. So the future study could consider the strengths of different types of convolutions and make appropriate combinations. Thirdly, just like Dr. Brand Statter said before in his keynote, there are some studies in using neural network discovering the laws of physics, the dynamics. This direction could also be applied to our existing models by considering the theory of dynamic traffic flow. Finally, our current results are still limited due to the temporal repeating problem. More advanced metrics should be proposed to improve this issue. More advanced metrics should be proposed to improve this issue. Our paper and codes are also available online. Uh, please take a screenshot if you are interested. Uh, that's all of my presentation. Thank you very much for your listening. Any questions?
Well, thank you very much for your great presentation. There are questions actually from our very own Christian Eichenberger. Many thanks, Christian Reitz, for the contribution in the competition and nice presentation. Did you use the static channels in your approach at all?
Uh, not in modeling, but I use the static information for masking the final results. Because apparently, uh, some of the cells will not have any traffic flow at all. So I just mask them off. That's it.
Very nice, very nice. Let me just check. I think for the moment there no further questions if I. Oh, actually, there is sorry from from Moritz Nine. Thanks a lot, Bo. Very interesting solution and great analysis. What model did you use for your submissions to the leaderboard? Three D resnet in core and sparse unit in the extended challenge? Or did you apply them differently for the submission? And he has a second question, which is for the core competition. Did you train a single model or or one city or one city per city? Or did you make use of the static road data?
Uh, well, we actually used three three D resonant for the core challenge and the sparse for the extended challenge. Uh, because we found the best performers can be achieved from these two models. Uh, independently, somehow our sparse unit. Overfitted in for the for the core dataset. I am not very sure about the reason. And for the second question, uh. Yeah, I trained, due to the limited time, I trained a single model like using all available data. And prepare the custom data in every epoch. So we we have picked several checking points. Because during the training process, we have several. The low M S E of the training data. So we just pick pick up this point, checking points, and then make a prediction. And check which one is the best. Actually, in the end, their their performers are very close. And that's it. We just pick up the best one.
That's very nice. So fantastic submission and thanks for catching that. And you came very, very close score wise. So great, great methodology. I think it's also high time, Moritz. I hand over to you and Christian for the award of the special prizes. Um, let me just maybe say one word beforehand. So tomorrow it's in Christian. Thank you very much for driving Traffic Forecast this year. Uh, I think without both of you, this competition wouldn't have been there. And then also to everyone again, of course, the competition is is really made by by its participants. So as Zep said, we were bowled over by the submissions, the creativity of solutions. And looking forward that maybe there's continued work. Moritz, I yield the floor to you.
Thank you. Directly hand over to to Christian.
So I'm going to make the start. Um, so in addition to the current extended competitions, we've invited all those the speakers of today to a special. Special prize on anomalies. Because the most important and most difficult task is probably not the forecast traffic under steady conditions. But in anomalous situations, so in in chance situations. And in in traffic forecast setting, we haven't done a lot on on that yet. And in order to get a first hint of what could be going on in these situations. We devised a very simple heuristic to find such situations. And then try to describe the model predictions, both qualitatively, qualitatively and quantitatively in in those situations. Um, so we didn't go about it with a lot of theory. Um, we didn't, um, we didn't aim at being very general and finding all anomalous situations or categorizing them. We just wanted to find a set and then look into that to to get us going in in that area. So what we did was was a trial and error process. So we went about it by computing volume and speed quantiles. And then filtering data on that, we restrict ourselves to the daytime because we thought. Um, there would be enough data there and we would see when traffic breaks down very clearly then. And then we had implemented a filter to see to find situations which take at least two time steps. And there was a final tweak where we looked also at the 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 volume and speed meet over a two hour window. And the output of our procedure, one example you see in the right. Um, so you see the horizontal dashed blue lines, which which represents the quantile. So the volumes in the gray area goes above above that line and the speed goes below that line. So that's one of the fifth criteria. And then we found the found the gray area. So which represents an anomaly found by our heuristic.
With this procedure, yeah, I think we we went on and selected a test set. Um, of one hundred of these outliers from the candidate set identified. We chose nine first days in September and October twenty nineteen in Berlin and Istanbul. However, that this was in October twenty nineteen, that was not disclosed to the participants. So there was also no information whether this was before in the in the COVID shift. Um, this and on the right hand side, you can see the candidate basically which were selected for the for the test set. And I think it's also no surprise that they are mostly along the highway where. You also to the heuristic, but also due to in general having enough data to see to see like a clear distinction of before and after in in such an anomalous situation. You can see that they are along the along the highway. Um, and so basically for each of the test, we just looked at a at a single pixel. Um, and kept out of for that basically the mask to then be able to compute the M S E on them. And with that one, basically, that was sent to the eight people which which are also presenting today in the summit. Uh, to rerun their models on on that data. So and we asked them to once run it on the model as they used it for for the competition so far. And they were also free to do a second submission basically with a retrained model. But of course, without knowing what exactly we were evaluating against. So with that, we could actually with the results we got from that, we could then go into like more quantitative evaluation.
So by definition, an outlier is restricted to one cell and one heading. So what we did, we we defined a masked and a masked M S E. So which only looks at that cell and that heading, the two channels of that heading. And and that differs for for every every test. So we had one hundred tests for for Berlin and one hundred for Istanbul. And the mask was different for for all those tests. And amazingly, the leaderboard looks quite quite familiar. Um, so if we look at both channels, we have Yichao first, Sun Bin second. And Alapi third with respect to that variation. Maybe one very striking thing here is if you look at the the levels of of volume and speed M S E. So M S E for for the the volume and speech channel separately. Then you see that the the overall levels are quite quite alike, which is not at all the case if you look at the full map. So if you look at at the core competition, where we evaluated on the whole city, on the the whole on the whole grid. And there there is a very large asymmetry. So volume M S Es very low in contrast to to speed.
So after that more quantitative, let's now also have a look at the prediction. At a bit more qualitative level and we chose a few locations in in Berlin. Uh, you can see them here basically along that main ring road. Which we also already saw earlier in the larger candidate candidate map. And when we now dive back into into that example pixel, this is basically now just on the top, you see the plot. Of the data curve for that specific pixel here, it's the test, the first, the first test lots. The volume is shown in the blue bar chart on the bottom and the speeds are showing in in the red line on the top. You also notice the few spikes, most of them are at nighttime, basically where there was a five minutes start with no data, no recordings. Um, and the heuristic to identify an outlier found that situation in the afternoon peak hour basically. And here very prominently, the speed has gone down and the volume has gone up. And here like this might look a bit odd, right? Because it only highlights the second second part of the outlier here. Um, which is already closer to the resolution of the jam. But nevertheless, that's actually interesting and interesting to look at. And if you look at at the bottom here, now we see just this tiny window. On the left hand side, we basically see the count roof as as basically the volume in blue. And the speed in red have evolved in the first hour, which was then the input to the model. And on the right hand side, we see the, on the one hand, in the in the solid line, still the count roof. And in the dashlines, what one example model basically was doing as as a prediction. Um, and there you can see like what the typical resolution society was there. One could say, yes, they they do good good thing in 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 balancing like the surface above and below the count of which they have. Have been doing here and trying to slowly but more like steadily go back to back to the level which which was there before. The second example, which which we picked is a different different pixel. But again, along along the highway in Berlin. Um, here, the the traffic jam after the gray bar, which we which we are looking into right now, doesn't fully resolve. Uh, and you can also see at the bottom, looking at at the speed, but especially at the volumes that also in the hour. In the prediction horizon, there is again a spike and like a bit something like stop and go traffic. Uh, so this is this is really hard to predict in that horizon. And here like you can also see that the model are basically doing not such a good job. Obviously, because it's also hard to hard to anticipate that. One could although have anticipated or expected from some models to take neighboring pixels into account. And to draw some conclusions out of that for the for the upcoming prediction horizon basically.
So if you look at different different predictions, then there seem to be three types. One we've seen already, which seems to go back to the to the free flow speed. Um, which seems to grasp that, but then other models which seem to go just to the mean of the of the input. That's the second type. And the third type, very strange models that jump to one value and then stay there for the whole prediction horizon. So if you try to summarize, the best models seem to predict a smooth version of some jam resolution over the prediction horizon. But they are fooled in in cases where the jam doesn't resolve over the prediction horizon. Right? So M S E probably makes some a blurred prediction to the mean in the data. And that's now for the for the prizes, Moritz.
Yeah, yeah, exactly. So I think the the insight is pretty interesting. And as Christian already said, that the the M S E didn't or did did also favor a certain style. But if you look at it more from that that qualitative aspect, one cannot really say. Which one is the best best resolution and best prediction for the for the horizon? And therefore, we decided to award no first prize, but instead award all seven participants with a five hundred euro gift card. And so Christmas is close and we we hope that people will appreciate that. And second to that, we we hope and we invite everybody to participate in the analytics and interoperability challenge. This is something which you will learn more about in the in the afternoon. Uh, and we hope that you will will do great additional stuff in in that challenge. Thank you so much for participating, helping us with with these insights and looking forward to continuing with with you hopefully on that journey.
Thanks very much, everyone, and see you soon.
Thank you.
Bye bye.
Thanks.